Not here now. All right. All right. Welcome to the June 22 work session. Glad everybody's here. Drink plenty of water and fluids.
Yes.
Thank you.
And you have an opportunity next week if you want to, I was just talking to Joe, if you want to go out and help lay asphalt next week on Cool Springs Boulevard. They're looking for part-time help. Be a great, be a great job, be a great experience.
I like it. I'm available at noon.
No, you won't be there now.
Well, you will be at eight.
So, anyway, everybody be careful and just, I'll do it twice. What is the, what's the cutoff date, the FEMA cutoff date?
July 6.
July 6, just for anybody who's here and watching or not watching or can print it or whatever, July 6 is the final day to sign up for, register with FEMA. So, we need everybody to know that if anyone has not yet done that. And I will reiterate that even if you don't have any damage, it's good to register because there may be something that happens sometime along in the future that might be related to this and if you haven't registered your SOL on that one. So, anyway, I hope everybody does that. Citizens comments, anybody who wishes to address this board on something that's not on the agenda, we will listen to that at the moment. If you're here for something that's on the agenda, we'll wait till we get to that subject if that's okay. So, do I hear anybody, see anybody? All right, let's move on then to item number three, which is the flood status update. We're gonna have, and as everyone, I should report that Eric is on vacation this week. It's been a long family planned vacation. It's, I think it's only 107 in Hilton Head.
She got the last guy.
So, but no oil, that's right. Just jellyfish. So, anyway, he's there and he did make it, I've heard from him, so at least the drive was successful. So, all right, Vernon, you're gonna do the, we're gonna alternate between our two ICAs here and I'm sure they can fill an admirable one. So Vernon?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Alderman. You may not have seen the comprehensive report that we had been putting together since shortly after the flood, May 1st and 2nd. And that's because we've been working very hard with our FEMA project writer, Marcia Henry Day is her name, and she has been with us for almost two weeks now, writing project worksheets. And what that means is that for all the damage and effort and expenses that we put forth responding to our citizens and our, the city's own assets, we need to submit a project worksheet to FEMA for reimbursement. We anticipate that eventually we'll submit over 50 worksheets. We submitted our first five today. And Marcia works very closely with us, specifically Todd Horton and Ron Nieskebar. So, we're focusing our efforts on that project as we go forward, but we will update the comprehensive reports. After we get done with that, I wanted to also inform you about the substantially damaged properties that were in the flood plain that have been given some heightened attention. And you may recall that we initially identified 35 properties that we believe had a significant amount of damage in their property. Since we've identified those, we now have done a detailed assessment of 26 of those properties and have determined that nine of those 26 have exceeded that 50% replacement value, which will mean that they're going to have to do something more significant to their property as far as rebuilding it or elevating it above the flood plain and doing some, above the flood plain elevation and doing some flood proofing. And we still have another nine that we need to look critically at.
Okay, so Vernon, a clarification, if they are more than 50%, but they're still in the flood plain, if they can elevate above the flood plain, then they're allowed to rebuild? Is that what you're saying?
Yes. As a, as a, that's, that's the intent, yes.
And maybe I misunderstood, are you saying that nine still are considered to be 50%?
Or more damaged.
Or more damaged. And the other, what is it, 17?
Correct.
Are turned out to be?
Are below that.
Good, okay.
And we worked with those residents to have their, their properties appraised market value and had contractors submit estimates of those repairs to determine that they did not exceed that 50% milestone and would be in compliance with the National Flood Insurance Program.
Okay. Any questions? All right. Next report, the Blue Bag Program. Becky, there's lots of conversation coming on about that.
There is, yes.
And there was a big blue bag on my big dumpster this week.
Eighteen thousand.
Yeah?
Ninety-nine others.
Oh, we have a little presentation, PowerPoint presentation.
All right, as you all know, we've worked on the Blue Bag Program for quite some time now and we've created a logo, we've got a mascot, we've got lots of work we've done. So, first few slides will be just a review. Well.
That's ready for the Blue Bag.
That's right, yeah. Recycle it, BOPA program. There we go. All right, so why did we want to recycle? We said primarily that we wanted to have a voluntary program. We said that we did want it to be a simple process. With the Blue Bag process, it's as close to what you do now with your garbage. You have typically a black or white trash bag in your, in your trash can to liner. So, line the bat, line the can with a blue bag, place your recyclables in the blue bag versus your garbage in the black or white bag. Reduces the cost of hauling to the landfill, that's priority. You know, the only way we can control our costs for landfill are to reduce the amount we take to the landfill. And this is one of the only ways we have left to do that. Minimal startup costs. When you start to look at the Blue Bag Program compared to purchasing of blue rollout containers, automated side loading trucks, that kind of thing, you're looking at a lot more expense than what we started with here. And then, of course, it's free for residents. The goal being that we could provide a totally integrated solid waste service for all of our residents at one monthly cost or one monthly service fee. All right, so what can you put in your blue bag? You can put paper, that's newspaper, mixed paper. A lot of places or a lot of folks think the slicky paper of magazines is not acceptable. That is acceptable. Steel cans, aluminum, cardboard, and plastics 1 through 7. Now, what you'll find is that all plastics are numbered typically on the bottom. And I want to say this carefully because styrofoam is a number 6. We do not take, we do not take styrofoam, even though it is marked as a plastic number 6. And you'll see this here. Now, one of the things I want to say is we won't take glass. Yeah, everybody start looking. It's a 1. It's a 1. The napkins are recyclable. We will not take glass or styrofoam and right now, styrofoam, we don't really have a market for. But the glass, you can still take to any of the convenience centers within the county. The closest one for a lot of folks that are downtown that don't travel West Main or even Sneed Road out toward Fieldstone, the Buyback Center, which is at the end of Century Court, just past our office, they are going to accept glass there as well. And I'll just say again, we aren't going to take glass in the trucks because it does contaminate the other recyclables. One of the questions has been, will we get rid of the two independent recycling centers that we have in Franklin that are, that are not, you know, not manned by anyone, they're just open? I will tell you that on Friday of last week, someone at the Williamson Square recycling drop-off site put meratic acid, which is typically a brick cleaner, in with their recyclables. And we were called to task to help, no one was hurt, they did evacuate in time, but that's just one of the reasons that it's important that we find an alternative way. It caused a lot of downtime, they evacuated the building for several hours and then we had to do cleanup, wait on first response, and our fire department did respond. So, those are just the things you get into when you're not quite sure what you've got and you don't have someone there kind of overseeing.
That was on the 1096?
Yes.
Let me ask you, is there, I take my stuff there all the time, but I just didn't even realize, is there anything that's there posted that says, "Do not throw away any chemicals"?
Yes, ma'am. They, I was gonna say now, it's posted, sometimes those signs disappear and then they're, you know, they're reapplied or put back up and then they disappear. People don't realize what happens when you mix some of the hazardous chemicals that are out there. All right. So, how do you prepare your recyclables?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
I assume there's a reason we're not taking glass?
Yes, sir. It will, once it goes into a compacting truck and it's broken, it will contaminate all of the other recyclables and decrease the value.
You can also cut the bag open and also injure solid waste workers.
Let me ask a question about the styrofoam.
Yes.
Can you take it to the Buyback Center? Or are you just gonna?
We just don't have a market for it yet. But I promise you, Sumraul is looking for a market for styrofoam. They assured me of that.
Other than the blue bag, we take the glass to the Kroger's buckets?
Those will eventually go away. So, you'll want to find one of the convenience centers that's actually got a person staffed there to take the glass. And one of those places would be at the end of Century Court.
Or we can put them in our garbage.
Or you can put it in the garbage. Or you can rinse them out and make nice flower vases. Preparing recyclables for blue bags, basically any of the food containers, we don't want anything that's got food on it. You can rinse things, just rinse the residue, labels can stay on the food containers. Cardboard boxes, it makes sense to me that you would break cardboard boxes down, especially larger ones, and put them under the blue bag. Any of your smaller boxes, a toothpaste box or something like that, you, you know, you can put it in the bag, but don't waste the space of the bag with the larger cardboard boxes. Those don't have to be. And then the bag will also help hold the cardboard down if the wind blows.
Becky, do you usually tell people to take the lids off, like if you had a plastic soda bottle or a plastic water bottle, do you tell them to take the caps off and just throw that in there or can the caps stay on there?
In the past, because it's two different plastics, usually the lid is a higher number, we can take 1 through 7 now. So, there's no reason to take it off and actually you can get more space in your bag if you smush it and put the lid back on. So, you can do that now.
Do you leave the lid on?
Mm-hmm. The key to remember about preparing the recyclables is simply we-
Smush it, is that a technical term?
Smushing? Not sure, we need to check Webster's on there. Keeps the kids busy in the summer. Rinse the recyclables to prevent unwanted smells around your home and unwanted critters. So, I'm gonna turn this over to Melissa, she's gonna talk about our public education program to this point.
All right, well, we created the Blue Bag logo with the help of Dan Platt. We did put it out to a bit, to a few different agencies and he came up with the best design and that's our logo and then that's Buddy Blue Bag. And we will be unveiling Buddy Blue Bag July 4th at the Fourth of July Festival actual costume. And I'm not sure who will be in the costume, but it will be the debut. And he can go around and visit kids at the schools and we've got really cute little Buddy Blue Bag stickers. We also created a Blue Bag brochure that most of you have seen and it's been very helpful when we've been out at the festivals because it has all the pictures that you saw of what can go in the blue bag. And then we created two banner stands and we've been using them at all the festivals that we've been to. And there's one at Harpeth True Value and Lowe's. And so, we're getting a lot of advertisement in the stores and a lot of stores have agreed to help us with the public education campaign. The tactics that we put together for the public education campaign, in March, we designed the Blue Bag webpage and actually, well, Mary Ann's not there, but we could pull that up if she was there. But in March through December, we're going to attend festivals and events. In April, we'll write letters, we wrote letters and reached out to retailers. We had a letter from the mayor and Becky and Eric and everyone really got on board and you'll see later all the retailers that are participating. In May, we distributed to the Franklin Special School District in every backpack and went home with all the kids. And a lot of people have talked about that and said that they've seen it. In May, we also sent a Mother's Day insert talking about advertising the campaign. We've also sent articles about, short articles that HOAs can put on their websites and in their newsletters. In June, we had a Father's Day ad that we put out on Facebook and we sent out electronically to all the people that subscribe to the Franklin emails. Becky and her staff worked hours preparing packets for hand delivery. And in July, we'll have the red, white, and blue bag insert and we'll be launching the program. And here's a look at the inserts that Monique laid out and helped us design.
That guy in the middle, he looked Blue Bag over there.
I'd ask Melissa, I'd ask Melissa for that.
I seen him look just like that before too.
I guess where it was though.
Yeah, and that's Mark's daughter and they were really sweet to advertise with our little insert there. And then the red, white, and blue bag days are here. That's coming out in July. And Lania, can you hit, there's minimized, there's, you can look at the, the Blue Bag's been the most popular topic on our Facebook site. Everyone's talking about it, we've gotten great feedback. And all the asking, they're asking questions, they're comparing prices. Sam says the lowest price. I can't remember what the price is, it's like a lot of bags for a low price. But at Lowe's and Home Depot, you can get 24 bags for $4.99. And Krogers and Publix, their bags are a little bit more expensive, but they do have them and they're participating. Do you want to bring up the website?
This is gonna cost me $5.
And we have all the retailers that are participating on the website.
No, it's not bad. It's not bad.
And then it shows you everything that you can put in your bag. And then on YouTube, we actually got testimonials at one of the festivals. People were so excited about this that they wanted to talk about it and we put it on YouTube. And you can see one of the ladies here from McKay's Mill and she's talking about the Blue Bag Program.
Hi, I'm Lisa and I'm from Frank, I'm not living in a town, neighborhood with my husband Bob and we are really excited about the start of the recycling program on July 12, I believe you said. We have been anxiously waiting for it because we are big recyclers, we've been recycling before, I guess it became popular. So, we are gonna support it and we'll have our Blue Bags out every single week when the trash guys come out and take them out.
So, we got, we actually got two testimonials and one in Spanish, a Spanish person that was excited about doing the Blue Bag Program. And then on Facebook, you can see the last post that we did, we had about 19 comments. And they're asking questions, what they can put in the blue bag, how come they can't put glass in the blue bag? And we're responding within hours of their questions. So, it's been a nice feedback and getting information. And you can see the Facebook site there. And then if we go back to the PowerPoint, we'll show you the retailers that are carrying the Blue Bags. It might start over again. Should I just go forward or we start?
You can go down to it.
Yeah, you scroll down.
Start on that one right there. Up, up one, up one. Page. That one, yeah. There, there's a little bit of, there's the display in Lowe's, they put it right up by the cash register. Harpeth True Value put it right in the middle, right next to their Blue Bag display. There's the Hefty 24 Bags at Harpeth True Value, which are about $5.29. They're a little bit more expensive than Lowe's and Home Depot. And then those are the ladies at the cash register and they're wearing their Blue Bag stickers that we gave them. And several stores will be participating in the, I'll bet it's showing you that, so you can see the cool animation there. And then, these are the stores. And those are the Got Blue Bags stickers. The cashiers will be wearing those the first two weeks in July. And Lowe's, Sam's Club, Krogers, Publix, Home Depot, Harpeth True Value, and Harris Teeter, they have the Blue Bags in stock. Kmart, Costco, and Walmart all plan to get them. Lowe's, Sam's Club, Kroger, Home Depot, Harpeth True Value will all be helping us with the public education campaign. And then that's the Buddy Blue Bag sticker that we can give to the kids, they'll have them to hand out to the kids. And then we'll be handing that out to festivals. And if you can't read it, it says Buddy Blue Bag says, "Everyone can recycle, it's easy." And then I'll hand it back to-
All right, this is just a, bless you. This is just a sampling of what we did last week. And on Monday of this week, we finished delivering right at 18,500 brochures to all of their homes in the city, Blue Bag included. And for the first look at our recycling trucks. We did get the three mini packers, they are on lease. We did want to set them apart from what our typical mini packer is. These are just decals, so if, if we decide we want to, you know, forego the recycling program, we can remove the decals. And that way, folks will know they're not your typical garbage truck. Frequently asked questions that we've gotten, we anticipated some of them, we weren't sure that we would, what we would or what we would not get. One of them is who will collect the Blue Bags? The City of Franklin Solid Waste Department will collect them. We will take them to Sumraul Recycling, who is under contract with Williamson County at their Williamson Recycles facility, where they will separate and process them and sell them for commodity. How often will they be collected? Every week on your regular collection day. So, that's no different than what you're used to. And where do you place them? Approximately five feet from your black rollout container. And if you look on the brochure, this is actually the inside of the brochure as one How many Blue Bags can you leave at the curb? As many as it takes. And then do you need to separate the recyclables? No. That will be done at Sumraul. The Blue Bag Program begins July 12 and we're excited. Thank you all.
Any questions?
One question that I've had asked to me is about concern over plastic bags and it's my understanding that those plastic bags are part of the recycling effort.
Yes.
So, that Blue Bag is not gonna be dumped somewhere and fly around the city, it's gonna-
The Blue Bags will be recyclable and then the bags that you sometimes will return to the grocery store or the Walmart or the Target, those will be recyclable in this program. So, if you don't remember to take them with you and you've got too many of them, you can toss them in the Blue Bag and those will be recycled as well.
Good. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Okay, any comments on the St. Paul's Barbecue? And Jingle Bell Run sounds pretty good right about now?
Yeah.
And Best Bites 5K Run? You got a question? Okay.
Well, I just wanted to make one point, but then I looked at the times, so I don't think there's any, any concern whatsoever. I just want to say that-
Speak up, Jackie can't hear you when you talk.
Clovercroft and Oxford Glen, that intersection, one quarter of that intersection's closed. I don't know if it'll be open by then. It may, it should, but I just want to let you know FYI, but that early in the morning, I don't think there's a problem.
Okay. Any other comments? All right, item number eight, this is a continuation of, we were gonna have it on last work session, we didn't get to it. And so, this is actually based upon our discussion that we had at budget sessions. And we threw that back in just to have a discussion about, as it says, the role of United Way in the, in how we allocate to outside agencies. My take on this is that personally, and I'd said that at the, at the meeting before, is that we, we had asked the United Way to spend time to do allocations and to make recommendations. We, they, and I want to reiterate, they did not do the allocations. They make recommendations, we, the board, mayor, all of them make the allocations. And they had been doing that for quite some time, I think probably about five years. And so, this time, they made recommendations we chose not to, which is our prerogative and our right to do that. We chose not to accept their recommendations. And my thought was, is this, is this something that we would continue to do? Do we, are we comfortable with the current allocations as a percentage of the dollars that we give based upon who's there and should we just use that? Do we want to relook at, you know, to do that? What I don't want to do is continually ask someone to give us recommendations and then not use them, not, just because if we're not gonna pay any attention to them, we might as well just do our own. So, because I hate to ask people to do extra work and then not pay any attention to them. So, not that we have to, but I think that's a consideration. So, I just wanted to throw that up. I think we all had some thoughts about it and so it's on the table. Go ahead with that.
I think last year and this year both, because they were cuts as opposed to, in some cases, having more money, I think that that, that particular situation probably led into our, our decision or some of our thoughts about not reallocating it differently. Whenever, whenever there's money and perhaps you're making some increase in it, I think it's particularly appropriate, but I think it's very difficult in the situation we were in for the last two years, which was decreasing the amount of money, that it, that decreasing some more than others was difficult. And I think that's what was, was my feeling there. You know, on better times, whenever perhaps we have other agencies asking or when we have more money, that, that it would be, it would be very helpful to have input on allocation. But whenever it comes to decreases, I think that, I think it makes it very difficult to reallocate and decrease both at the same time.
Mark?
I just think, you know, we've, for the last several years, we haven't followed the recommendation.
Two years only, I believe.
Last two years.
Only two, only two years, I believe.
But still, they, they have a committee, they go through these, they put effort and time in it. And if we're uncomfortable with what they're suggesting for our allocation, I'd feel more comfortable if we would review those. Now, a question had come up before about difficult paperwork, you know, if we could use the same form that they do and review those documents so that we can do this. Now, I would hate for staff to put more time in this than we'd absolutely have to, but I'd feel much more comfortable because we have been uncomfortable the last two years about how it was allocated and have disagreed. So, I think that means we need, we need more input in this. And we need to find a system that we can exercise.
Well, another thought, another concern that I have is, is, you know, obviously the last two years, we've kind of kept the percentages that we've had before. It took us a while to get to them, but we ultimately got back to those percentages. And so, my thought, my concern about not using them is if we had another agency that wanted to be involved or if we had one that maybe fell off. You know, we had one agency this year, I can't remember who it was, who, who requested less money.
Yes, yes.
Based upon their funding. And so, so, I mean, I'm really kind of arguing on both sides. I'm not sure I know the good answer to this. But, but I also am not sure I would feel comfortable in just saying, okay, from now on, these are the seven agencies or what are the numbers that we're gonna give and it's gonna be in this Pearl Rata share and without any concern for that. So, you know, I'm not, I'm not sure I know a good answer. Ken?
I can wait for Pearl. I'm patient.
No, after you, no, no, after you. Pearl, go ahead.
You go ahead, Pearl. No, you go ahead, Pearl.
Thank you, Jim Van from, from up there.
Thank you, gentlemen, from left there.
Actually, it's on the right. You're probably more on the left.
Thanks.
Be your label.
Well, my thoughts are sort of around what the mayor's talking about is because I think there's potential for other folks to come before us. And I don't want to close the door. I don't want to put certain parameters out there that only this handful of individuals or groups or committees can come before us. And we need to keep the door open. So any discussion around that, I would support that we allow and continue to embrace others that may approach us rather than just thinking that it is a set group of individuals or groups that can come to us for this money.
Ken was there next.
I think the comment I would want to make is that one of the things United Way does is verify each one of the charities as far as their need and their credibility and so on. And I think that's a very important function that they're doing. And then the second thing that they've done the last two years is determine allocations, which I'm still struggling with. It's, and it's my understanding that the, it's a closed list. There is no opportunity to add additional people at this point in time. And so I think we'll have to decide whether we want it to open back up, which then would water down everybody's opportunities.
Dan.
Well, I know Alderman Barnhill and I have both been through this. The reason that we, if I remember right, the reason that we got United Way to do what we've asked them to do was because we used to have these budget meetings that went on for a week or two at a time every day, where one whole session was devoted to one dog and pony show after another, where worthy charitable organizations came in and made their pitch one after another. And I think there was a sense that, and I remember I used to get recruited to more than a few of those charities. I don't hear from them much anymore, but I, you know, I used to get asked to sit on all these different boards. And, you know, you come to budget time and it was, it was, you had, we basically just had a free-for-all of worthy organizations coming in and asking for their share. And so having sat through that year after year, I think the board, as ironic as it may sound, wanted to depoliticize the process a little bit and ask, in a sense, the experts to tell us where the money needed to be applied. If we had this much money, how would this, you know, how would they apply it? And that's what United Way has done for some years. You really have to, you really have to pick which one is more unmanageable or less desirable items. If we ask United Way, then we're just going to, if we ask United Way to do what they've been doing, then, I'm not saying that we need to be prepared to rubber stamp their recommendations, but if we ask them to do what they've been doing and they do it, then I don't think we ought to be in a big hurry to wring our hands over it and lament that somebody that's worthy got left out. As far as I know, anybody that wants to can go ask United Way to be permitted to participate in their process. I would rather, you know, there are, there are those who, from time to time, tell me that they would rather we didn't make any contribution at all. We're the City of Franklin and we ought to be paving the streets and keeping the peace, and that's it. You know, there's something to be said for that, and it certainly would be clean and tidy. But as a matter of history, we've always given something. And, you know, I understand people that say, look, if I want to tie, or if I want to give it to charity, I'll give it, but don't take my tax money and give it. I have found that the United Way recommendation method, while it's a little more sterile and maybe less, less personal, it is pragmatic and it allows the people who are closer to the scenario to know where the money should be allocated. And it depends less for its success upon a personal relationship with, because I mean, leading up to the budget meetings, I would get calls for meetings with board members from wherever. And, you know, you feel bad having to tell them, hey, the best, you know, try to get on the list next year, you know, we, you know, it's too late this year, or I'm sorry we can't do better, or, because it's just, and I don't begrudge them, but it really became an almost endless process of, and we were, you know, we would sit for hours at a time and talk about $5,000 donations to one group or another. I'm not, again, I'm not saying that we need to just rubber stamp what the United Way gives us, but be clear about the choice. If we do not accept United Way recommendations, then really all we're doing is, you know, is defaulting back into that, that other paradigm, which between the two, I prefer, I prefer to let the experts tell us how the money can be best spent and defer to them. Or don't do it at all. The least desirable result in my mind is to have, is to set up where you get 10 or 20 or 30 or 50 organizations all coming in looking for a 5 or a 10 or a $20,000 contribution. Because you will, you will not find a way to differentiate between one worthy cause and another that is, that is valid. You'll just be sitting here wringing your hands over the others that didn't get something.
How do they do it?
Yeah, exactly.
I don't care.
How do they do it?
Honestly, I mean, I care, but I don't know, and that's the point. They know who's out there and needs. And if they want to one year tell somebody, hey, this is your year, and another, and next year you, or, I mean, that's what they do. And that's, you know, to some extent, I think we have to either decide to make a contribution or not. And if we do, then let the people who presumably know where it needs to go get it there.
Well, I can tell you, I for one have no desire to listen to the process before. That wasn't my, that was not one of my choices. One of my choices was.
You should do the same thing with all the budget, with all the department heads, too.
Was to either take the pro rata share that we have now, leave it there until we make a change in how our money comes in. And if we have more money or less, maybe we do something different or not. In other words, whatever, you know, you take those seven agencies and you have the total amount, you divide their pro rata share, and if that's what we're going to deal with, then that's what we're going to deal with. Or we ask United Way to do that. I don't, the other one, to me, is not an option as far as I'm concerned.
Well, I just, I mean, I think that you really risk missing the opportunity to do some good. I mean, you know, if I were, if I were to take 60 down pillows down to goodwill, do they need them? I don't know. Did I do a good thing? Maybe. But somebody knows whether or not.
They won't take them.
Well, maybe they won't. But, I mean, my point is just that I don't know and we don't know.
Nothing to do with beds.
Where the, where the best allocation of those monies are. And that's why we, I mean, historically, the reason that we asked the United Way to participate the way that they do is because we found it impractical and cumbersome to sift through dozens of worthy organizations.
Any other thought?
Yes. Again, let me say two things. Number one, I work for the Clay Center. I'm the executive director there. Throw that out so that there's no misunderstanding about what I have to say. And it's been interesting comments. First off, it was, it's amazing to me that a process that did work for 15 years, 20, 25, 30, suddenly doesn't work now. That's number one. Number two, I fill out for paperwork for the county, guys, two or three sheets, two or three pieces of paper for the county. The county comes back, they set the parameters for 2% increase, 6% reduction, whatever it is. I don't even go to the county. It is not, it has been allowed to become a cumbersome, burdensome process, but it doesn't have to be. Number three, if you read through any of the material that I've gotten as far as whenever United Way became involved, they were determined, they worked to determine eligibility. I don't have a problem in United Way taking that 990, that audit, that state charitable solicitation letter, my 501(c)(3) letter, my board of directors listings, my, anything that's on there that needs that kind of scrutiny, look at it. But I tell you, I turned in the same thing for United Way, for the United Way money. So I turned in two times the paperwork, two times the process to get something done. That's the only thing that I said. Now, if he cannot, if he cannot go behind the door on a tax dollar, be invited in, that's the reporter, be invited in to see how the tax dollar is being spent, then the public doesn't know how that tax dollar is being allocated. And I won't do that. That's why we're elected, to know how the tax dollar is being spent. It's not to give somebody or appropriate or give somebody else the authority to determine how your tax dollar is being spent. It's our responsibility. It may be cumbersome, burdensome. Why did we run for the position? We ran to monitor the taxpayer money, to make sure that we knew where it was being spent and how it was being allocated. You know, I also even thought to myself, if that were the case, if it was such an expert, we just need to get an expert group of engineers and we'll set up a panel for streets and we'll give them the $25 million or whatever it is for streets and let them come back. And that takes care of that political process of ours. You know, I mean, it's, there's, there's no difference, other than there's an amount of money. Just one of them is less, one of them is more. All I ever said was, if United Way would do what I think they were requested to do five years ago, you won't hear a thing out of some of us, me, whoever else. But I will not agree to their recommendations on allocations when we sit in and said it's going to be a 6% cut. If it's a 6% cut, it's a 6% cut. Doesn't need to be 18% for one organization, 2% for another. Over and above the 6% that's been cut. And, you know, it's just, you know, it's, you cannot, you cannot imagine the amount of paperwork that you put in for this versus three sheets of paper to go to the county. And I promise you that the county does more. They may not do more for all the organizations, but certainly do more for the jail Clay Center than does the City of Franklin. Two or three paper, two or three pieces of paper, bam, send it off. It's done. Do the, do the legwork and leave the money alone.
Michael.
Do we know if the United Way committee is still interested in this?
I haven't talked to them.
I guess that'd be the first thing, to see if.
I do want to go back to what I said first. I think the difficulty comes in these last two years when we had to make cuts. You know, if it was just other years when there was more money, then I don't think there would be the difficulty that we've found these times. Because it's whenever, you know, whenever there's not enough money, you know, to even keep up with what the city has done before, it's very difficult to cut disproportionately. I think that's, that's part of the problem.
Well, what if we decided, we had a, and again, I'm just playing devil's advocate here, Tony, if we had a great tax year next year and we decide we're going to put $100,000 more dollars into this fund. Now, the question would be, would we just go ahead and increase everybody that's on the list by that amount? Or would we talk about having more agencies that come in? You know, if there's an agency that had, say there was an agency that had a huge benefit. Let's say the Jail Clay Center had someone who passed away and gave them $5 million bucks. You take it. But the question, would we then fund them the same proportion that we did everybody else? You know, I, they're, they're, not, to me, not every time. And I will disagree with you, though. I don't believe that every organization needs the exact same cut nor the exact same increase. I think that, that there's different demands. I mean, some agency may come to us and say, as an example, we're building a new building and, you know, nobody else is, and we really need a little extra this year to help us with a new building. Maybe we need more equipment or whatever. You know, is that more appropriate to give them a little bit more one year and less the next year? I mean, I, I see, I see that there should be an opportunity to analyze each of them and to make a determination about their needs and where it is. And I for one would be comfortable with the United Way's recommendation on that, as long as it's substantiated and that we can read it. I do not want to sit through the five days of everybody going through this. And maybe there's a, maybe there's an in-between way to do that. And maybe, maybe, you know, maybe that's what the county does. I don't know how the county does it. I'll never ask. But, you know, Pearl, I'm not.
I would be interested in knowing from the United Way who submitted and was rejected. Were there people who submitted to the United Way for city funds allocations and were rejected by the United Way?
And where did that list?
Where is that?
That list came from at this point in time.
Okay. This would be, is there an exclusive group that is always identified and recognized?
Let me make a recommendation. We're not going to solve anything tonight anyway. Why don't, why don't?
And you don't really have to.
No, no, no. I know, I know. We're moving forward. Why don't Eric and Russ and I sit down with United Way, talk to them about, you know, what they're doing? Those are some pretty good questions. And let us come back with a report to you in the next couple months. She does, absolutely.
I remember when we used to do it this way, my first budget meeting, I asked then street department director, Wilson Vaden, I said, Mr. Vaden, was, what did you, what did you, because it used to be that the, it may, may work sort of the same way. The department directors would submit their wish list budget, and then it got whacked, and then it got submitted for further review. And I asked Mr. Vaden one night, I said, well, what did you, what did you ask for that you didn't get? And he looked at me like, you can't really be wanting me to say that right here. And I said, yeah, I really do want to know. He ended up getting some asphalt or something put back in, but I would like to know what, I would like to know what the process that United Way went through to weed out whoever.
I tell you, we'll talk to them and maybe it'd be appropriate for them to come and give us a little report about how they're doing, what they did and what's been there. Does that sound good?
Because those are our citizens, too.
We basically opened the Pandora's Box and I don't think.
But it's good for discussion.
Yeah, but years ago, my mantra.
Transparency.
Of the jurisdiction of government, you know, they opened the Pandora's Box years ago and, and we're reaping what we sowed.
Well, and there's a, there's a, there's a great discussion about whether or not we should or we shouldn't. I will go with the theory, however, that if there's an organization that is providing a service that a city might otherwise provide, then there may be some economies of scale and that can be done.
I think Humane Society was the one that always got in because of that.
Right. That's exactly right.
If the Humane Society didn't do what they do, we would be out picking up.
And to me, that's probably ought to be the litmus test, more than anything else. I mean, I do believe that.
It's a service that government has to provide.
Well, go ahead.
Just one other comment. We do make one-time capital expenditures. I mean, we've made them to the library, we've made them to bridges, we've made them to multiple organizations in there. So it's not as if it's what, when you were saying, we may want to cut one year, do more or less one. We make, we make capital expenditures to those organizations.
Well, we haven't since I've been here, but then, but, okay. But maybe, maybe they have.
We made them.
Not since this board.
We didn't do them for the books.
We stopped in, when we started cutting the budget two years ago, we stopped.
I forgot about you not.
I'm just a little naive compared to the experience that you and Mr. McClendon have. So, all right, well, let's move on then, and we'll report back. Item number nine, consideration of lease purchase of backup 9/11 phone system for the police dispatch. Fred is here to discuss that.
This is a request to add backup dispatch for, in case the 9/11 system that we currently have in place fails. We had this set up, this arrangement at the facility before they moved. We had this set up, this arrangement, uh, at the facility before they moved, and so this is just a request to add that.
And, and it couldn't move with you, there was a reason...
We changed from analog to digital.
So I understand why we did that. And I guess the question would be, there's two ways to, to pay for this. One is, there's money in a contingency reserve fund for the police station, which can be used that way, or we can add it to a lease program that, that we have, and, and we, we need to determine which direction, uh, we ought to go, or we can, I, I wouldn't necessarily feel comfortable leaving that up.
And I would just add that finance has no preference on this. There, it's the same money either way that you want to fund it.
So, um...
Is, is there any possible change of technology that's going to come up if we would do a lease that would be advantageous, that then we could...
You don't, if you do those leases, you own them, you're just paying for them different ways.
This is, uh, this is the latest on the voice, this latest technology.
Is this like DIP, or...
Yes, it is, IP funds.
Uh, now, uh, that, that is on the agenda tonight. We will have to decide which direction we want to go on that motion. There's one or two. You want to make a, just a recommendation?
What's the difference?
Actually, we can decide the, the financing later, because it's going to be an outright purchase from the vendor. We would just either add it to a bank lease, or we would add it to the, to the contingency from the, the bonds that paid for the police station.
Would we feel comfortable just giving them at their discretion?
Whichever one is the better choice.
But, but you're saying there's really not much of a difference.
There's very small difference.
Yeah. Anyway, it's just a...
Okay. And this does add on to the existing contract, so we don't have to have a separate contract track?
Yeah.
Or we don't have, have separate maintenance arrangements for this. It's all under AT&amp;T. Okay. Fred, item number 10, consideration request from, to purchase 12 replacement batteries for the APC power conditioning unit in the MIT server room from Pomeroy IT Solutions of Nashville. State contract.
It's time to replace the batteries in our conditioning unit, the, they're six years old. Last year, we almost had to replace them, but we were able to continue using those. But, uh, it's time to replace those. This is on state contract.
Any questions? Item number 11...
We're getting better pricing through that state contract.
Absolutely.
We checked three other sources on pricing, and state was the lowest.
Okay.
Same time the state's not the lowest.
Thank you, Fred. Item number 11, consideration, and just again, reiterate, 9, 10, 11, 12, and 13 are on agendas tonight. Number 11, consideration of a sole source ma- maintenance agreement with Physio Control Inc. of Redmond, West, Redmond, Washington, for the service and repair of the department's automated defibrillators. Boy, this is a hard one, and cardiac monitors for the year beginning June 1st, 2010.
You want to read it?
I'm going to have to read it tonight. No, it may be on a consent, I may be okay.
It's not purchased soon, but this is for a maintenance agreement, actually, for them to come in and...
The ones you currently carry.
And service our current cardiac defibrillators that we have.
We try on our trucks and...
Yes, they're on our trucks and at City Hall and various locations in our community. And as, as you see, we had a budget allotment of $10,000. That was an estimated cost. When we got the letter from them in early June, it said that it was $11,760.47. Uh, one thing I would bring to mind is that that's still the 2008 pricing guideline that they're giving us, which is a good price. So we're asking approval and allocation for this.
Okay, how many, how many units do we have?
Um, Ms. Branford, we have approximately 10 Life Pac 500s, and then there's, I believe, four Life Pac 12s, so...
How often does this have to be done?
Well, they have to be serviced maybe every six months.
So this cost here is going to go through what period?
Through, I believe it's May or June of two...
Just for a whole year? This is an annual contract?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, thank you, Rocky. Item number 12, item number 12, consideration of emergency purchase of pump for the city of Franklin Hillsboro Road Pump Station. This again is, is, the money's been spent for emergency. The only question I had about that is, um, is this the same pumps that, that are going to be upgraded?
No, sir.
It's not, it's all different.
Yes, sir. It's a different station. All right.
It's the blue bag gun.
Correct, this is as you enter the, the road to the rec center.
Oh, 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 okay, all right, all right.
That's the...
All right, I was thinking, Bill.
I understand.
Okay, any questions on that? All right, thank you. Item number 12, that was 12. Item number 13, consideration resolution 2010-49, a resolution to amend resolution 2010-17 pertaining to the pension plan from July 1st, 2010, to no later than October 1st, 2010.
Shirley's not here tonight, so I'm going to take these. But if, if you recall, we froze the pension effective February 15th and set a target date of July the 1st to complete that. But given the disaster that we had and, and a lot of scheduling problems, we'd like to move this back to October the 1st. That gives us July and August to work on it, get a presentation to you, and we're, we're trying to pin down a date in mid-July for that, and then vote on it in September.
Okay. Item number 14, consideration pension trust agreement amendment.
If you recall, we amended the plan document. In our discussions with the trustee, uh, the committee and the trustee bank felt that the documents that we had for the pension plan, for the trust agreement, the investment policy were dated. So we've gone through the process of amending the plan. This is now the process of amending the trust agreement between the city and the trustee bank. This is basically a, a upgrade that brings us 15 years forward with some of the language. It is almost entirely clarification language that changes. The pension committee met and endorsed this unanimously, I believe.
Questions? All right. Uh, item number 15, consideration of resolution 2010-35 authorizing the adoption of the manual for the septic certification inspection program. This is a continuation of our last work session.
And we may have people in the audience, too.
Oh, okay, great. You want to go first?
Sure, I, I will. Thank you, again. When we were talking, had discussions about the assessment district months ago, and we modified the ordinance, we, we, the board of mayor and aldermen approved that septic systems would be inspected every three years. And then since that time, Chris Bridgewater worked with the county to put together an inspection program, which is outlined in the manual, that we were looking to have adopted by resolution. When we spoke about it several weeks ago, there seemed to be some concern that maybe the, the three-year was too frequent of a time. What we'd like to do this evening is, is try to come to some type of consensus of what that timeframe will be, because if we need to go back and amend the municipal code, we'd like to do that and bring that forward, because a municipal code would take two readings to change if you should decide on four years or five years. Or as we had discussed, if, if somebody feels that the septic systems shouldn't be a part of an inspect, or that the pumping of a septic tank shouldn't be a part of a inspection program, that, um, you know, we wouldn't, staff doesn't endorse having any type of, of program then, because it is important to visually inspect the, the tank. So that's what I, I wanted to throw out to you, so we had an understanding of what to bring forward during a voting meeting.
Okay. Margaret?
Vernon, it's, it's my understanding that some people in the, who have septic systems right now, understand one thing, and I think we as a board understand something else. So I would like to clarify exactly what we're talking about. It's my understanding that the $75 that the city charges, that's for the, for, I'm sorry, for, for the inspection, is that right? Is the seven, what's the $75?
What we're proposing is a $75 inspection fee that the city, for the city to visually inspect the, the ground area and document the pumping of, of the tank.
That's without the pumping of the tank?
Correct.
That's before the, the tank is pumped?
Correct.
And then, do we have somebody that's, that's qualified, certified to do that? Do you have to have somebody that's certified to do that? That was a question.
Go ahead, if you want to answer that question. We, all right, well, we will, we are going to certify licensed haulers that understand what the requirements are for a visual inspection and providing us the proper documentation. The state licensed agrees haulers and these types of companies to pump, um, those types of systems. So we will have a list and have pre-qualified them that they understand what's expected.
All right, so then, after we go in, after the city goes in, Mark will use you as an inspector. You'll go in and, and walk...
He's taking out the trash. Now he's doing the same.
And you will walk around to see if there's standing sewage. If there's not, if there's not, the, the property owner will have to hire a company to come in and pump the tank.
Right.
Then somebody's got to go and look in the tank to see if it's working right. That if it's not leaking...
The intent of that is to be done by the...
By the hauler will look at it, yes.
And they're qualified to make that decision?
Permit?
That's a good question.
Yeah. How will they look?
They going to crawl in there? That's not the way it works.
Wait, wait, Mark.
Yes, they will.
You can do one thing, or you're going to look in, when the tank is empty, you're going to look in the tank. You are going to look in the tank. You've already walked around.
No.
Somebody else is going to do that.
When the inspector, when our inspector visits, visits the site and inspects the field, the drainage field, they will hopefully not find any moist or standing sewage, and leave the resident, or talk to them if they're there, how, how, the instructions on who to call and how to have the, the tank inspected in the paperwork, okay? Pumped and inspected. The hauler will come out, pump the tank, and inspect it visually by, by looking inside the tank, to make sure that, um, the sewage has, is decomposing, the baffles aren't clogged, and, um, see if anything's really running back in from the field.
So that's the person that the resident hires to do that?
Yes.
And they're qualified.
So why do we charge $75 to walk around the yard?
Well, the time it takes us to visit the site, inspect it, leave the information, and then receive the information from the pumping, or the hauler, pump and hauler, um, and then to document it and provide the certification and the tracking.
I have a question.
Yes.
What, what, I'm building a house.
Double duty.
It's time for my electrical inspection. What do we charge for that?
An electrical inspection, that's part of the, the permit fee.
So how much is my, so when I have a permit, when, if I buy a permit and it's time for my electrical inspection, no additional fee?
When you purchased a permit, it's based on the, a number of devices, the size of your home, that, and that equates to the permit?
All right, pick a, pick a garden variety 2,500, 2,500 square foot house. What's my permit fee likely to be?
Gary.
So I can get for $90, multiple inspections done along the way, because there's plumbing, electrical.
No, no, you just asked about the electrical. There's several electrical inspections in, in building the home.
Right, but my permit was how much?
$90.
And that covers what?
That, that, I'm glad you asked that question. That doesn't, that does not cover the services that we render for that electrical inspection.
Okay, what I'm getting at is, because I think it, I don't know how much it really costs, but if I can make $75 walking in someone's backyard and trying to find a soft spot, maybe I'm in the wrong business. Because I can do four an hour, three an hour, because all the septic tanks are packed together. I mean, eventually, I guess you run out of places to go, but there's only so many septic tanks and they're clustered. So if you get in the business and you get a handful of them, it just seems to me to be a little disproportionate to the actual event. And it also seems to me to be redundant if we are also going to require a visual inspection of a recently pumped tank. If we are requiring a visual inspection of a recently pumped tank, which I gather is the only real way to know if it's broken. But if we're requiring that periodically, and it just seems to me to be maybe a little onerous to also have to pay the city to send some guy out to find some, to find something that is not there, or hopefully is not there. $75, I mean, if I permit, again, if I pay, if I buy a $90 permit for my 2,500 square foot house, I don't know how many inspections that triggers for me or pays for, but we're, you're talking about, you're talking about leveling the, just off the top of my head, the following charges on people to not hook up. Annual inspections, compulsory pumping, I mean, and these are all for people who have not had any demonstrated failure. And a lot of the people, as we know from having had these discussions, that are on septic, never had a problem, don't have a problem, and don't expect they're going to have a problem, because they're not raising a family of five. There may be empty nesters, or widows, or, or single, you know, people that, people that run one load of wash a week and don't have any, I mean, they're just feeling, the feedback I've gotten from this is that they're feeling very put upon to opt out of this, of the even more expensive sewer system. They're being told that they got to pay the city $75 to have some guy walk in the backyard for what, a couple of minutes?
What do we charge for, do we inspect the backflow preventers? What do we charge for that?
$8 for inspection.
That would be more, as much, as timely as, as doing a...
I just thought the $75 covered the inspection of the tank, that the city would do. Because I can't understand why you would have a...
If not less.
An outside hauler come in and pump the tank and let him do the inspection. What if he just is a friend of the resident and says, there's nothing wrong with your septic tank? I thought that's what the city was going to do.
No.
No, and that's, that's why we're pre, pre-qualifying them. And, you know, the, the amount isn't, isn't important, what we try...
Yeah, it is if you're paying it.
Well, but what we're trying to do with that is, is not as much as the inspection as it is an education, to help them maintain that tank and the functionality of their septic system.
Well, I'm for that.
And that would be by sending them a letter before we were to visit, to see if they wanted to schedule an appointment. Then, visit the site, show them the information that the county has on file, that we're working to acquire, to make sure we have a complete record of where the septic field and tank is on a particular property. Visit that site, share with them what's, why a, um, a tank should be pumped every few years or periodically, and that was some of the information I shared last time. But ultimately, the choice is yours.
We, we don't think these people know that? They've lived in a house 25 years, don't tell me, this lady's shaking her head, tell me, these people, and if I owned, my sister's been in a house 36 years, she has septic. They have sewer out front they've never hooked onto. Tell me she doesn't understand septic. They, they don't watch their septic tank, they don't want to mess in their yard, but, you know, I don't get it. I just think the $75 is redundant as well, because we're going to have somebody come in and pump the tank anyway. Why even inspect it? Why not just have somebody come in and pump the tank? But I'm not really liking that either. I, I think there's an easier, better, more inexpensive way to do it. Do I have the idea right now? Maybe not, but this just doesn't seem right to me.
Wait, wait, I'm going to let Pearl, she had her hand right. Wait, wait, I'm gonna let Pearl, she had her hand right.
I'm sorry, Pearl.
Well, I'm concerned because those individuals with septic tanks and responsible, they're gonna do those things, they're gonna get their tank pumped. There will be a group of folks who cannot afford and will not do, will not do any kind of routine pumping without some kind of assistance or prompting. So I think we're talking about two groups of folks. Individuals that take, are very responsible, like this lady had an audience who will make sure she does not have sewage leaking in the yard and, and she will do something about that, because she can afford to do it. And then we will have those who cannot.
Mark.
Our people has not invented this. This, this is something that other jurisdictions do, you know? This, this, this is not something they just pulled out of the air for us to make money. You know, we decided that we weren't gonna go with a hundred and eighty days to require hookups once the trunks were finished. Well, either you're proactive and you help identify these systems that have failed so that we can react to it, so we can be proactive instead of reactive. The cost of the program is, is part of what the seventy-five dollars is. It's paperwork, it's, it's going out there. It's something we haven't done before, but we chose to, to deviate from what the policy was and change that. So now we have a new, a new program. And, and either we're proud of what we're gonna do and we stand behind our people, or, or this is just lip service. And, and another way to save people money, but to risk the health of, of the citizens. When these things do fail and we don't know about it, and we wind up contacting the health department to help give hepatitis shots to neighborhood kids that happen to play in sewage that are downstream from some of these.
Margaret.
It happens.
I do not, I don't have a, a problem with the pumping of the tanks. I think this is something that we have to do. And you have answered my question. There was, there was discrepancy between what the residents understood and what I understood. And you've answered that question. I do think that to go from no inspection to every three years is a bit severe, and I would, I would encourage us to choose the five years. In all, in all these papers, it's three to five years. And I would encourage the five years, that's better than nothing. And that's what we have now.
Dana.
Well, my, my principal concern is that we maintain the safety of our communities. That's why we did these, that's why we retrofitted these neighborhoods in the first place, okay? However, the way I, the way I understand this proposed program, every three years you would have a city employee inspector charging a rate that we set, which is proposed at seventy-five dollars, and that person will go out and inspect, which will be a visual inspection from, I guess, boots on the ground in the yard. I don't know how long that takes, there's some costs associated with us providing that service, I get it. However, regardless of that city employee's findings, the owner must, in the same year, also pay two to three hundred dollars to pump and visually inspect the tank. So we're having someone walk around in the yard who makes a, by definition, incomplete inspection. An inspection that might miss a failed, that it really is only gonna catch the obvious too-late fail. I mean, that's really all, that guy, he's either gonna say, "I see nothing," or, "We got a big problem here." There is no way, as far as I can tell, for that city inspector to say, "Six months from now, this is gonna be a trouble." Or a year from now. Or if only you would pump it now, you would be fine. So we're really not providing much in the way of help to the, to the owner by charging them the seventy-five dollars for the inspection, because they don't ever get to, if he passes, if that city inspector passes them, says, "Good to go, I see nothing," they don't get to not have the three hundred dollar pumping inspection done the same year. They don't get to avoid that. They still have to do it. I could live with saying to the septic system owners who decline to, to connect to sewer, that at some interval, you must pump and you must have a visual inspection done when you do. Three years, four years, five years, whatever. But I think that ought to be it. Unless you can tell me that there is some advantage to the boots-on-the-ground city staff employee inspection being done in the same year that I don't get. Because if you could go, if that city staff were to go out there and say, "I was here three years ago, it looks good, the homeowner reports no problems, they can pass the pump, you know, they can skip the pumping this time," then the homeowner might not have much to complain about, 'cause it might save them three hundred bucks. Instead, we're just piling on. And I get that we're trying to distribute information and everything else, I just think we could mail them something the same. We don't, my problem is sending a person out to do something with a mandatory fee, which does not even create the opportunity to spare the homeowner the three hundred dollar fee the same year.
Anne.
I, I, some of these are just questions. What are the county regulations on timeframe between pumps, pumpings? I saw this sheet right here, but-
I believe that's guidance information.
That's guidance, okay, so what are the, what are Williamson County regulations on the timeframe between required pumps, pumping out?
I don't think they have.
They don't have it at all?
No.
I think the recommend-
They recommend?
Recommendation is generally between three to five years, which comes from the state.
Okay, but there are no requirements if you're on-
Once you got it.
-in the Williamson County? Okay.
And again, this, the whole concept behind this is for those who have sewer available.
I understand that, I understand that. But I just, whenever it said county, three to five years, I was assuming that that meant that they required it every three to five years. But in fact, they do not require it at all. Okay, if they're going to visually look at this, does that mean that they have to dig up your yard?
Uh-uh.
How do you, how do you do that?
There's a cleanout that, that they stick a camera in.
Okay, good.
Well, the, the other part, and maybe-
No, I mean, let me go ahead.
Okay, because it helped to answer, when you say visually inspect, it's, it's more than simply walking on the ground and in the field is, is because there are, there's a configuration to the septic system and the, and the field that maybe a certain area of it could be plugged, and there is maybe some moisture, whereas the rest of the field is functioning, and it could, that, that septic field could be cleaned somehow. And that's maybe an advantage of, of the inspection, too.
Okay, so they, but then, so then our inspectors could do the, what are you talking about with the clean?
No, just visually inspect it, try to identify the problem.
Okay, all right. How many incidents have, have occurred in the past five years where we have had the problems that were alluded to here, where people had to have hepatitis shots? None?
There has been-
There have been some times.
There have been a couple situations.
And that just because of economic-
Some of the problems you're talking about here. But, but in other words, that is not something that occurs in the City of Franklin, not even, not routinely, it, it occurs extremely rarely. Could we say that, extremely rarely?
I, I-
Well, I mean, who, you know we've had some times, you know we've had some times. So I was just saying how-
We know that septic systems has failed based on the assessment districts that recently have come up, and then there were some isolated cases that we showed, showed pictures of.
Certainly, and whether there's hepatitis, we don't want raw sewage coming out of something.
No, no, absolutely not.
There's not a, there's certainly not a-
No, no. But I was just asking, is it something that happens, you know, very rarely, or?
I have no idea.
Okay, but that's-
Now, she's got the floor, keep going.
Oh, well, I, I would say, now that I found out that the city, I mean, the county does not have the required pumping, I would certainly be in favor of the five years in between times.
Michael.
So if a neighbor calls and says, "I've smelled sewage from next door," we don't necessarily go out and charge them seventy-five dollars for that inspection. That's part of the program, whether that inspection was done a year ago or four years ago. We've still gotta maintain staff that'll be familiar with this, that will go out. It, it, it's not always just the field line, that, that, you know?
Sure.
It'll start backing up in the house, and the first thing they do is, is pop this, the cleanout plug. And then it goes all over the, to, to give immediate relief from the inside of the house.
Okay.
So, I, I-
I hear sort of a consensus going on here, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna maybe summarize.
I had originally suggested five years, I'm sort of sticking to that, I think, but, as we were talking, I looked up Texas, Malibu, Washington State, and a couple of other ones. Actually, some of these people charge a hundred dollars just to go out and look at it, some choose to charge fifty dollars, and some are seventy-five. And there are some of these cities here, I'm just reading, that go out and visually inspect it, and they don't require these pumps to be pumped. And that was good enough for them, but if there's any, any visual at all, then they require them to be pumped and, and hooked onto sewer. The other thing here in this one township, they were talking about, that there is, you know, there is a number of years that they require this. And I didn't see anybody here, you know, as I had four or five of them looked at, they didn't require the pumping and the visual inspection.
Let me summarize a little bit. The, the issue that we have is that the first thing we really have to do is change our, our municipal code. Because we can't, we can't change this to five years first, because a municipal code has to go first. And then we, then we have to coincide with the municipal code. So I'm going to, I think, bring forward next time, a proposal to, to do, to change the municipal code to five years, without, without the inspection. And, and then we can modify that if we go to, but that'll be-
The inspection fee.
Further, without the inspection fee, yeah.
I have one other very small thing to say, and that is, in the initial letter to homeowners, our records indicate that your home is served by private septic system and that you are eligible. Please, change that. You're eligible for the certification, in other words, you're required to be a part of the certification.
No, you can hook up and opt out of this whole program.
Okay, good, okay. Let's, let's say that, though, let's say that. Either you are in this program or you're gonna, or you will have to hook up. But don't say that.
Well, we want to encourage people.
Yeah.
It's a, a good thing to encourage people to hook up.
One more question.
Yes.
Will this come out of enterprise funds, or will this come out of general?
No, so this is they manage to do, uh, community neighborhood services.
Do we have any other? I was gonna say, does anybody want to say anything?
Can we share your thoughts?
All right, so we're gonna do that on the, on the twenty, whenever that is, the twenty fourth, the twenty-fourth of July, we'll bring that back. Okay? Okay, good discussion. Item, item number sixteen, consideration of resolution, two thousand and ten dash four six, a resolution to extend the sharing of the preservation plan and responsibilities through December thirty-first, two thousand and ten, or until such time as the position is filed. Any questions or comments on that? All right, item number seventeen, consideration of resolution, two thousand and ten dash fifty, a resolution to authorize the emergency expenditure of fifty-four thousand, eighty-seven dollars and thirty-five cents for the Maples Shopping Center Drainage Repair to be paid from Stormwater Reserve Fund. And we, we have a contingency, everybody's got their ties on. I won't tell Eric that you wore your tie.
They really, really look nice.
They look very nice, don't they?
Really, really nice.
I won't tell Eric you had your ties on while he was gone. He will be pleased. All right.
As they may remember, we had a area that collapsed over drainage system, the Maples Shopping Center. We did not have in-house the equipment that can repair such an area that we had. So we have a contractor in place that we called Sessions paving, came out, assessed the damage, what needed to take place, and did the work for us. It took about three weeks, and actually, the invoice came in less than what we expected. So three weeks worth of work of the magnitude that they did, we were pleased at the cost of fifty-four thousand dollars. Just to let you know, it failed because of a deteriorated corrugated metal pipe, a large pipe, plus an underground stream that over years just basically deteriorated, took out the dirt underneath the asphalt. And that was the reason for the collapse.
Okay.
And we also need to say that this is not just the Maples drainage, it is coming from across the street, too, that's a part of a, a kind of original system.
Part of a large public drainage system.
Right, right. That, that was stated in here, but I just wanted to-
Which worked effectively on May first, as a matter of fact, because the downstream, you know, that, those ponds and the Maples didn't, didn't flood homes?
No, sure didn't.
They didn't what?
Flood any homes back there. They got close, but I mean, it's tiered back. I was, I'm a, I was a big part of that system, because I built Williamson Square-
Right, right.
And we tied on to that system. And we have one, two, three, four detention ponds that, that fill back up. And so that system, when, when it's just stormwater, it works. And when a river overflows, there's not a lot you can do with that.
But it is a regional system, not just serving Maples, and, and I just wanted to make that clear to the public.
Which is what the Stormwater Fund is for, quite frankly, so.
And just to let you know, we had another collapse on Peytonville Road, which has already been repaired by the same contractor. We haven't received the invoice for that yet, but we will be bringing that to you as soon as we get there.
Okay, all right. Thank you all.
Consideration, excuse me, would these be eligible for some of our FEMA requests? For Peytonville Road, well, the Maple Shopping Center actually occurred before the water, so.
Got you, got you. Are you sure?
If we go back to the dates, yeah.
Well, you know, it doesn't hurt to ask. Okay, thank you guys. Item number eighteen, consideration of memorandum of understanding between the Housing Fund, Inc. and the City of Franklin for the purpose of providing technical assistance relating to annual updating of the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development Consolidated Plan, Action Plan, and CAPER in the amount of twenty thousand dollars as approved in the two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven CDVG program year. The consultants' fees are paid within the CDVG fund, so that just comes out of that. Okay. Item number nineteen, consideration of resolution, two thousand and ten dash fifty-five, a resolution acknowledging the law agreement between the Tennessee Main Street Program and Downtown Franklin Association. This is something we've always done, and they asked me to sign it, and I didn't feel comfortable signing it until I brought it to you, 'cause I don't like to sign anything without y'all's permission, so that's what it's there. You know, and I've not done anything like that. There is no cost affiliated with this.
And it says that we're not, we're not, the City of Franklin's not a party to it.
That's right, that's right.
But we certainly benefit from it.
Saying it's, that we're not a party to it.
Okay, item number twenty, update of the Eastern Flank Battlefield Road update.
Thank you, Mayor. Many of you know Amanda Hall, who's our, our student intern presently, working with the Battlefield Task Force and our Historic Zoning Commission. And what I'd, we'd like to do is have Amanda share with you some of the results of a, a neighborhood meeting that occurred with respect to the access roadway for the Eastern Flank Battlefield, and then also get into a little bit of the Battlefield Task Force recommendation. And then, and finally, what we want to do is get a little bit of direction for David Parker, as he is working to put together resolutions that would have you endorse the, the top small projects, so we can move forward with those hopefully by the next meeting. But I'll let Amanda go first.
Did everyone get two pages? One is a copy of the memorandum, and one is a copy of the site map. Okay, well, as you know, this is the, the Eastern Flank Battlefield Park roadway as proposed by the, the CIP projects that, that's coming for you. This is- This is ranked as a number one priority among the small projects in the CIP program. So the Battlefield Preservation Commission recommends option four, that you can see up here on the, on the bigger map as well as in your hand. The bigger map's directly from the public forum that was held last month at the Eastern Flank Clubhouse, inviting members of the community from Heath Place Subdivision, as well as Carriage Park and other places throughout the city who are interested. I also have photographs here to demonstrate the road surfacing of option four as presented by the commission. Option four includes the entire loop as shown on the map, but to lessen the cost of the road, the task force proposes paving the one half of the road, which is the eastern portion, that's on your map highlighted in blue. And I'd also like to gravel the remaining portion of the loop to finish it off, grade it and gravel it, but not pave it with this material. This material is exposed aggregate. It's not, it's not loose at all. It's historically aesthetic and a lot manageable, being it's wise for the park department. It's not loose, no, it's not.
Okay, but I need to ask a question. It says, it says, exposed aggregate asphalt or concrete, that's not what you're talking about. You're talking about a tar?
It's an asphalt that has this pea gravel in it, and it'll look like a black asphalt initially, and then as it wears down, the pea gravel that's embedded in that will be the surface that you really see.
So it actually is an asphalt?
It is.
And it's not, it's not oil-based, and then you throw the gravel on?
No.
It comes out with the pea gravel in it?
Yes.
And it's where, okay.
And use that instead of charred or...
Right, and it has the same kind of, and Joe, you might, does it require the same kind of base that you do a normal asphalt paving?
It's just like regular asphalt except it has pea gravel.
And when that wears away, does that pea gravel become loose after time?
Should not. Not if it's made of the plant.
Oh.
Should be just like the regular, if it goes in your asphalt, it should not come out.
And is asphalt now cheaper than concrete?
Somewhat, somewhat. Our topping is, but if you get on down to the bottom or something like that, this would be in the top.
The master plan proposes curves and gutters along a 22-foot roadway, and the recommendation of the task, or the Preservation Commission, rather, would be to narrow that down to 18 feet because they believe that that would be appropriate for two-way traffic, and as the loop is finished, it would be more appropriate than a 22-foot roadway for a one-way loop. And they also, like I said, they want to remove the curves and gutters, they believe that that would decrease the cost by approximately $100,000.
So we're looking at a $300,000 proposal?
Yes, but they also would like to construct parking at the current Fleming Center, and that is not part of the master plan. Well, it is part of the master plan, it's not part of option four, and that would increase the cost.
Now, that, that parking lot could be, could we, would that be the same surface, you think, or would it be maybe gravel, or how would you?
I'm not, I'm not sure.
This would be another opportunity for us to see what kind of contributions we can get from other people.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Basically, it would be the $300,000, kind of with what you're talking about, right?
Correct, yeah.
What about the yellow, Amanda? Is that, when you say gravel, is that loose?
Yeah.
All right, will it go over into the grass, or will there be some kind of border?
Well, that's something we would need to consider. Parks recommends some sort of a curb or gutter on that portion so the gravel doesn't wash away over time, and they would have to replace it periodically.
Well, I think the commission viewed this as a temporary situation, and to come back and finish that, just like the lower portion is at a later date. We would set the groundwork for the base of the road and all that, but just not put the topping of the asphalt to save money.
Will it still be usable? Will you still use it as a loop road?
Absolutely, it would be great for additional egress for major events at Carnton Station or the Eastern Flank Battlefield.
I think the plan on the normal daily routine of Carnton, you just use the two-way road, but with, with major events like the, like the band series or other things, that they would, they would do it one way.
And that, that thing that's coming up, 150th anniversary?
Sescrentine.
Whatever.
This would give options.
Sescrentine.
We could cut some of the cost of this, but it will still give us options as far as usage, and then hopefully, in future years, there'll be additional monies that we can finish this out, just like that, the other surfaces.
It's a very reasonable price.
Yeah, it is, yeah, I agree with that.
When you say temporary, for how long? What time period?
Till you come up with the money to ditch the rest of it.
But I mean, I mean, what typical, Joe, would that last? I mean...
Can I ask that for you, Joe? Joe can't give you that, it depends on how much travel's there, how much rain is there, how often it's used. It also, though, does help prepare the base for the, for the next paving, so it's not, it's not a waste of money, because you have to have, and the longer you drive on a stone base, the better your road is going to be, so.
Be more perfect.
I mean, I mean, so, it just, and it just gives them an option. I don't think, I think we'd keep that closed, except for events, and so it would, it would not really be used that much, because you wouldn't want heavy usage on that.
One of the suggestions from the neighborhoods was that if we could put a locking gate and let Carnton be responsible when they've got events, to lock that up at...
Yeah, they do that. They lock their own gates now, so that's...
So that would be an easy fix to help them.
I agree with that.
Well, thank you, Amanda, for showing that, but the direction that we really need now is, we, while we haven't priced and provided a rough estimate for this, apparently there had been consideration that the board would support the lowest-cost option, which was about $245,000.
This comes right in that range.
It's close.
Now, this would be above that, so I want to make sure, to provide Mr. Parker proper direction when he comes back with the resolution to incorporate.
Is everybody okay with them going forward with that plan?
We need the estimates before we finally know.
So let's go forward with that plan, and we'll bring it back for final approval when you get the final numbers. Okay, guys, we're good till 7 o'clock?